I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand in front of the allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take some of that to vote.
In accordance with the local public meetings that chapter 231 act of millions for this meeting has been provided as follows: On April 28, 2016, noted to send to home review, Star Ledger, local source, and the clerk company municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permit in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this board dedication may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein as is allowed at the regularly monthly meeting under sunshine law.
Local. Mr. Colvis?
Here.
Mr. Tappaleski?
Here.
Mrs. Bellani? Mrs. Bellani, are you here?
I explicitly am not in the meeting, yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
He is excused.
Mrs. Beviano?
Present.
Mrs. Birch?
Here.
Mrs. Slater?
Here.
Mr. Walrath?
Here.
Mrs. Hueda?
Here. Approval of minutes from the committee of the hall held June 23, 2016, and the regular meeting held on June 28, 2016.
So moved.
Second. Local. Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tappaleski?
I guess I'm in the halls, I stay on the podium.
Mrs. Chauani?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Mrs. Hueda?
Yes.
Comments for the public, agenda items only? Seeing none, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, Rockford. Just want to update the board on our continuing our Technology 1 to 1 program this school year. On August 30th, all of our sixth grade students will be receiving their Mac repairs to the August 30th, the distribution day. And in September, our ninth and 10th graders will be swapping out their three-year-old computers for brand new ones. The plan right now is to utilize those surplus computers in second and first grade classrooms. Any parents who need additional information can find it on our website, under the parent tab, please click on Technology 1 to 1. Also want to remind the board that we're gearing up for our second annual district launch, which will take place on September 1st. It will be an amazing event for the second time in our history. We'll bring all of our district staff together, all 1,000 plus, for a day of professional development, inspiration, and celebration of all that is great about the place that we love. I want to just let the board know that our Italian learning service project went really well today. Our Italian students flew home today, they landed safely, they're back at home. They had a very successful visit to our district. I want to thank all of the parents who hosted those students. It was a wonderful experience for both the Italian students, but also for our own, one of our own board members, Mr. Walrath, when on the Italian machine, he was a student. And I know that through these experiences friendships last for a lifetime. So it was truly successful, and I thank Mr. Pat Anasho for organizing it, coordinating it, and for all those who helped with the program. Our summer ESL programs, our extended school year programs are still ongoing. Our summer facilities projects are progressing nicely. The board received an update on those at our committee of the hall. And finally, we have a brief presentation tonight from someone everybody, I think almost everybody on the board knows, Mr. Si Marison, who is in charge of the EMAT program at Lyndon High School. And excited to have him talk to you about some new initiatives and some new ideas that Mr. Marison has. So, Mr. Marison?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm going to read this a little bit. I also, I gave out a slip, just in case if you don't understand English, you can read it in English. This is our ninth, our 10th year that we're here at Lyndon High School, giving this program called Entrepreneurship EMAT, Entrepreneurial Management Security Program. To my left, it's a very innocent-looking lady, but she's the president of the program for the past nine years, and has also been the key administrator and coordinator of the Master of Fine Arts program at Parsons School of Design and NYU for 22 years. So she's not as innocent-looking as she may seem sitting here. The reason I'm making this quick presentation, of course, I don't want to involve everybody with a lot of war and stuff, but I just happened to notice something that's very, very important. On the assessment of individual needs, that is one of the things that the policy manual for the board is on, which says, "Identifying the needs of gifted talent, children, disruptive children, disruptive pupils, pupils." In fact, there's eight things listed. One of the reasons for the board's overview is to get everybody involved. The word of the day now, in the world, STEM is there, but the word of the day now is entrepreneurship. It's starting to be taught in high schools. We were one of the first ones in the United States of America that started it nine years ago. It was normally given in colleges, and even then, not well. We gave our first Master of Fine Arts in arts, music, and engineering. They didn't call it STEM back before the recorded history, which is when we started our program at NYU and Parsons. So I would like to read this to you very quickly, and then we're done. As discussed, we've met with Danny Rotasi, who has always given us his significant major support. We are presenting to the board the following. As we prepare for our 10th successful year of EMAT at Lyndon High School, along with the initiation of the EMAT Alumni Association, we now have an alumni association with EMAT. Students that graduated nine years ago have graduated college four years ago. It's scary how fast time goes by. What we wanted some of those people to come to our new alumni meeting, some of them were running companies in Europe. They wanted to excuse themselves, they couldn't make the first one. And they were EMAT Lyndon High School graduates. As we prepare for our 10th successful year, along with the initiation of the EMAT Alumni Association, other EMAT connections, and perhaps to colleges who have been looking to us to perhaps put in an EMAT program at college level, we recognize the opportunity that all mutual experience has given all of us, the potential to leverage the core educational concept of entrepreneurship. And I see Anthony is here, and he just graduated in entrepreneurship, correct? He's sitting on the board. Converting the arts, STEM, ID, business, and art, DACA, and other subjects, there is also the possibility of connecting the mayor's youth commission, of which we're involved in that, with entrepreneurship, putting it all together. So what is, what am I, this last paragraph is the reason I'm presenting it to the board. Entrepreneurship is becoming a reality focus for education and potential social, national, and international progress. In other words, the individual human being, not groups, not name brands, but individuals, and that's what we teach in EMAT. We're like match.com, we're an introductory program. We introduce the students to themselves. Now we don't charge anybody a lot. Therefore, as we proceed to have the Lyndon Board of Education, one of the things we'll look into is formally recognize the goal for our 10th year. Lyndon, Lyndon, the town and the EMAT program is branding Lyndon educational system as an entrepreneurial center. STEM a lot of people have, and they think it's great. We have over 50 after-school programs, I believe, at Lyndon. But entrepreneurship is a single brand. People today that graduate from high school or college with something that can associate them with entrepreneurship, individual dreaming, ambition to reality, and learning how to communicate, I think that's unusual. So we would like the board to formally bless the goal of the 10th year, which is entrepreneurship should become a brand for Lyndon High School and the town of Lyndon. That's the conclusion.
Mr. Marison, thank you as always. The board knows, I'm not sure if members of the general public know, but Mr. Marison doesn't get paid. He volunteers hundreds, thousands of hours over the years to helping our students learn entrepreneurial skills, leadership skills, business skills. And he does that all voluntarily. So on behalf of the board, Mr. Marison, thank you so much. We look forward to continuing our collaboration. And let's do it at least 10 more years, okay?
Well, I agree with that.
Thank you. Madam President, that is all.
Thank you for your presentation. We'll go on now to our standing committees. Curriculum and Instruction.
Thank you, Madam President. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the assistant superintendent, present the following 35 motions to the Lyndon Board of Education for approval. Items 1 through 8 deal with the approval of specialized programs for the placement of classified students, determination of out-of-district placements, the approval of payment for related services as per child study C evaluation, the approval and termination of home instruction services, the assignment of one-to-one paraprofessionals, adjustments to related services payments, and the approval of Level 1 services with commission for the blind and visually impaired. Item 9 approves the charter school enrollment for the 2016-17 school year. 10 approves home instruction services provided by the Hampton Behavioral Health Center. 11 amend board action on past CNI reports. 12 and 13 approve the field experience clinical observations agreement between King University and the Lyndon Public Schools District in the 2016-17 school year for the students listed. 14 grants approval for the Lyndon Girls Volleyball Team to use the Lyndon PAL facility for practicing games. 15 and 16 grant permission for use of facilities and school activities. 17 approve district field trips. Items 18 through 23 approve training for district staff. 24 approve professional development activities. 25 approve Stephen Hambooks for 2016-17 school year. 26 approve student interns to conduct observations and practums and field work in the Lyndon Public Schools during the 2016-17 school year. Item 27 grants approval for the Lyndon High School student to continue his final year of study in the 2016-17 school year exempt from tuition costs. 28 and 29 approve the bi-yearly summation report on HIV and the school self-assessment for determining grades for all Lyndon Public Schools. Item 30 approves the annual contract with LexisNexis Risk Solutions. 31 approves the establishment of EMAT, the entrepreneurship grant for students at Lyndon High School. 32 grant permission for Bright and Beautiful Therapy Dogs, Inc. to conduct sessions with students at school six. 33 and 34 approves contracts with Trinitox for occupational therapy services and behavioral consultations. And item 35 approves superintendent's determination and actions taken for all reported incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying discussed at the June 28, 2016 regular meeting. Madam President, I move curriculum and instruction, items 1 through 35. Respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Discussion? Local. Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tappaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes to all, but I'm staying, saying no to item number 25.
Mrs. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes to all, I must say, to the number 18, facing that.
Mrs. Hueda?
Yes.
Management and Operations, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Management and Operations. The Management and Operations Committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, presents the following motions to Lyndon Board of Education for approval. There are 33 items under the Management and Operations for approval. Item number one is the passing of a former employee, Dr. Robert Houghton.
Thank you, Mrs. Birch. We were sorry to hear of the loss of June's man. Both Mrs. Cleary and I had an opportunity to join her at the high school. She was a stodion for 12 years at the high school. And I'd like to offer our condolences on behalf of the entire school, the students, her family. Let them know that our thoughts are with them. Thank you.
Item two is the resignation of staff. Item three amends board action on past management and operation reports. Items four, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, and 33 are the appointments of staff. Items five and six are the transfers of staff. Item seven is the leaves of absences. Item eight compensates staff for unused vacation days and sick days upon retirement as per negotiated contract. Item nine compensates staff for unused vacation days at the per diem rate. Item 10 compensates staff for unused vacation day buyback as per negotiated contract. Item 11 retroactively appoints staff as substitute teachers. Item 20 approves the updated Lyndon Public School organizational chart. Item 21 grants approval for the teachers listed to conduct a ninth-grade freshman orientation program at Lyndon High School. Item 22 appoints students for part-time work to videotape Board of Education meetings and other assigned special projects. Item 32 approves a job description. Madam President, I move Management and Operations, items 1 through 33, and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Discussion? Local. Mr. Colvis?
Yes, however, I abstain in item 7 and 10.
Mr. Tappaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Mrs. Hueda?
Yes.
Support Operations, please.
Thank you, Madam President. The Support Operations Committee, on our recommendation of the superintendent of schools and business administrator, board secretary, presents the following 26 finance motions and five facility motions to the Board of Education for approval. Under Finance, items 1 through 6 are the root of board business dealing with acceptance of the business administrator's board's imperious certifications as of June 30, 2016, though item line item accounts exceed the amount appropriated or over expended. Board secretaries' rule? Board secretaries' report for the month of June 2016, organization for payments and salaries and supplemental payroll for July 2016, and draw warrants in the amount specified in the favor of the person's name, and a list of transfers and adjustments for the month of June 2016. Item 7 is the treasury report for the month of June 2016. Items 8 through 10 are to accept funds in the amount of $15,741 from Educatus International, Boston, Mass., representing tuition for a student LM for the 16-17 school year. $20 from the state and New Jersey probation administration, representing student restitution, and $3.25 from Fight for L O E Philadelphia for the benefit of school six. Items 11 through 20 are to pay payment through the amount of $3,000 to Hartland School Services, University of New Jersey, for online applications, annual subscription, a contract with Ed Services, Commission New Jersey, for transportation services for the 2016-17 school year for special ed students, a contract renewal with Genesis Education Services, Jamesburg, to provide student information systems, total not to exceed $45,000. A contract with Blackboard Connect, Sherman Oaks, California, to provide voice broadcasting, emergency notifications for citizens during this 2016-17 school year, total not to exceed $14,000. Renewal of Learning Ally yearly maintenance plan for the amount of $8,800 with Learning Ally here in New Jersey, which includes unlimited access for qualified students with print disabilities to access voice text audiobooks. And phone support for training of educators to cover the school year. A renewal of private special yearly maintenance plan in the amount of $7,070 with Computer Consulting Group, Boynton Beach, Florida, which includes software upgrades, telephone support, 32 users and coverage for the school year period July 1 through June 30, 2017. A contract renewal with automated building controls, Neptune, in the amount not to exceed $6,000 for HVAC services for school four for the period from July 1st through June 30th of next year. A contract renewal with Networks &amp; More, Inc., Island Heights, for email archiving service with web hosting from 2016-17 school year. A contract renewal with the National Weather Station, LLC, Peterborough Airport, to provide tailored meteorological support during the 2016-17 school year, total not to exceed $1,400. And the submission of the IDEA application for fiscal year 2017 through the State Department of Education. Item 21 amends the long-range facilities report. Oh, the one from 2005? Item 22 approves enrollment of the college student for the 16-17 school year eligible on a tuition basis under district policy, 5118 pending enrollment figures. 23 authorizes business administrator, board secretary, to submit to secretary and treasurer's reports for the period ending June 30, 2016, to the executive county, Union County Superintendent of Schools. Item 24 is to clarify any surplus equipment, obviously, and or unusable, to be disposed of in accordance with district policy. Item 25, quotations as listed, bids, A for art supplies and B for music supplies and equipment. And item 26 is to approve a contract with Xerx Corporation for the lease of the equipment for the St. Elizabeth's property. Other facilities, item 1 amends board actions on past operation report. Items 2, 4, use of facilities that are charged as requested by non-precedent principal of school 1. Stan Redella, principal of school 5. Shawn Rodriguez, principal of school 8. And item 5 is use of facilities that are subject to charge as requested by T. Hinden, president of Lyndon High School, Inc., popular. Madam President, if there are no questions or comments, I move item 26 of Finance and item 5 of Facilities, and then see, a second.
Second. Mr. President? Local. Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tappaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Mrs. Hueda?
Yes.
Planning and Policy Committee? Mrs. Slater?
The Planning and Policy Committee submits policies for first and second readings to incorporate new features required by COVID law and to elaborate and enrich district policies. I will be reading the first readings for policy number 357. District records and reports policy title change for complying with New Jersey Department of Treasury, Division of Revenue, and Enterprise Services, direct management services, school district records, retention, and disposition schedule. Policy number 5120, assessment of student needs. Minor change in the mean of dyslexia assessment, neurobiological in order. Policy number 9250, expenses and travel reimbursement change to comply with OMB circular 16-11-000.
I would like to move that the policy be made right for the first time, the second?
Second.
Discussion? Local. Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tappaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Mrs. Hueda?
Yes.
Reports of the special committees and delegates? There is no state delegate?
No state report.
And there's no town, county?
Well, I, I would report on the counties, because we've been busy. So, just real quick. The dates have been set, although there's one date that's upcoming here for the county meetings in the upcoming year, and the topics have been set. So, by September 12th, of course, by August, we should know the full schedule for county meetings.
No ESTs? Do you have a date for EST for the finals? And it's not for students for the summer, and not for special ed?
Yes, actually, there was a special meeting convened on July 19. Apparently, there was some concerns for safety at the JDC detention center, and the superintendent has suspended direct instruction to the students at the JDC. At this time, they are doing everything they can to meet the contract rules as best they can without putting anybody in harm's way. There is no plans to extend the contract past August 31st, and that's all we have right now. The students are getting indirect instruction, in other words, getting their materials, but the teachers aren't instructing them on a one-to-one or classroom basis.
Thank you. Are there other questions?
Well, I have a report from ISTE conference. Okay. Mrs. Cleary, Mr. Walters and I attended the ISTE conference in Denver at the end of June. The conference ran from Sunday through Wednesday. I finished off on July 1st, I think was the last thing. The keynote on Sunday night was Michio Kaku, who many of you may not be familiar with the name, but if you were watching Discovery Channel or something like that, you've seen him. He's a chap of these gentlemen, long white hair. He's a theoretical physicist, and he's hosted several TV specials for the BBC and Discovery Channel, History Channel, and the Science Channel. In his vision of the future, he sees the next big changes being in law, education, and medicine. He already, he outlined the early changes of the old blue collar workers, he said, and stuff like that, all that stuff's being replaced by computers. The next ones are law, education, and medicine. The law, he sees the end of the, not the end of lawyers, but the end of the, the people that do the research and stuff in the law.
That one's a news alert.
Well, it's in my lawyer. In medicine, he sees the ability, because of the way things are changing, where you can walk up to your wall, and a doc, you can tune in, dial in for the doctor, and the doctor will look at you through your wall, wallpaper, and he'll be able to diagnose you online. This is some guys on the street. These guys are futurists, so. And in terms of education, a lot of the faculty that a lot of teachers do, where it's not going to be required anymore, and they're looking more at what we already know, is teaching kids how to think and how to find good stuff and things like that. Unfortunately, as long as we keep testing the way we are, we're not going to be deliver, we're not going to be able to deliver the type of education that's going to produce that result. Then on, that was Sunday. On Monday, I met with Mike and Ethan, and we talked about what approach we'd like to take on exhibit four. take on the exhibit floor. There are so many exhibits, so many vendors, and so since there wasn't a lot that we were going to do in terms of hardware and support software, we decided to look at things that would enhance the actual curriculum. On Tuesday morning, keynote speaker, Rua Benjamin, who is an assistant professor in the Department of African-American Studies at Princeton University, specializes in interdisciplinary study of science, medicine, biotechnology, great ethnicity, gender health, and biopolitics. And her driving question is, how can we honor science and technology for greater equality? Dynamic speaker, and basically made the point, and we here at Lyndon are already on that track, that if we don't provide the right amount of technology to all of the students, that the educational gap is going to go wider. And the final day of the conference, a teacher from, Michelle Porter, a third-grade teacher in London, Ontario, spoke about how we need to change the way we share information with other instructors, and how technology can change how students learn. She's an Apple離婚教育 educator and Google-certified teacher, and a master in science education. She's a third-year teacher. I'd like to give her a round of applause.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Need your business for the board? I asked for a motion.
So move.
Second. Speaker.